So excited to welcome all of you to our meeting tonight. So I'm Jennifer Dixon and hopefully you are here tonight to talk with us about the Marathon Petroleum Detroit Refinery Draft Consent Order. So we have a little bit of an agenda tonight and I want to make sure that we get right into it because I know everyone has things to do. So I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Mary Ann Dole Hanty. She is our Air Quality Division Director and she's also the decision maker for this project. So she just wants to make sure that she welcomes all of you to our conversation tonight. So Mary Ann, whenever you're ready, go right ahead.
Excellent. Thank you, Jennifer. And as Jennifer said, I'd like to personally thank all of you for taking the time out of your evening to participate in this informational session and public hearing. Public participation is very important to us and it's a vital way for us to work together toward Eagle's mission of protecting public health and the environment. Public participation in ways like tonight's hearing for the proposed Marathon Consent Order creates avenues for conversation as well as a consent order written with the public and the environment in mind. We appreciate your flexibility in participating with us virtually. And we do understand that the situation folks are living in right now is challenging. For those is challenging and these challenges vary from person to person, family to family. And we know that this method of public participation is not ideal. We welcome your thoughts on our process as well, always looking for ways to improve what we do. So I just wanted you to know that I'll be listening in tonight as the decision maker so that as I look towards making the decision on our proposed order, I keep you your comments and concerns in mind. So thank you again for listening and for joining us. And at this time, Jennifer, I will let you take it from here.
All right. Thanks a lot, Mary Ann. I appreciate it. Appreciate you being here. We're gonna probably see you, Mary Ann, a little bit later when we start the public hearing. But before we get started on doing that, I want to make sure that I introduce you to all of the folks we have here tonight to answer questions for you and participate in the public hearing. So the first thing I want to do is just introduce folks and I'm going to kind of do it as I see them. So we've got Susan Kilmer and actually should introduce Erin Moran first. She's our enforcement specialist and she is the one who has worked with Marathon to draft up the proposed consent order. And you're going to be hearing mostly from her tonight when she kind of goes over a brief presentation in a couple of minutes. And then I also do have Susan Kilmer. She's with our air monitoring unit. So she'll be able to answer questions about that. I forgot to introduce Les Smith. He's my man behind the scenes. He's going to be helping me out with the question and answer as we get going here today. I also have Erica Wolf. She works in our SIP unit and she can help answer questions on non-attainment, things like that. I've got Keisha Williams. She works in our toxics unit. So she would be able to answer any questions you all might have in that regard. I've got also George Acevedo and he is the inspector for the facility. So he'll be able to answer facility-specific questions dealing with inspections and stack testing and things like that. So that's going to be our panel tonight. So panelists, if you guys want to go ahead and turn your cameras off, you can do that until we get to the Q and A session. I do want to talk a little bit about how tonight is going to run because if you haven't participated with us virtually yet, the way we're doing these meetings is a little bit different than when we do it live. So what we're going to do is open this up for our informational session and that's going to include Erin kind of walking you through some things about air quality division in general. In case you don't know about that, it's your first time kind of hearing about it. And then also a little bit about the proposed consent order itself. Then we're going to do a question and answer session. And I want to be very clear about this and I'll probably mention this a few times. The question and answer session is going to be a part of the evening where staff will be able to respond to your questions. So we'll open it up. We're gonna, I'm going to tell you how to type your question, which sometimes is easier because that way you can exactly say what you want to say. And we'll read those questions out loud. And then after we get to those typed questions, we will allow people to raise their hands and ask their questions verbally. So just to be clear, this is a part of the evening where we will respond directly to your questions. So that's why we have our panelists here. When we get to the public hearing portion of the evening, this is going to be the part where we are taking comments on the record. So even if you asked a question earlier, that's not necessarily a comment on the record. I hope that a question that you might ask or something that you might hear during the informational session or the Q and A might help you give a better comment when we get to that part. So during the public hearing portion, I will read a kind of very boring, dry statement to you, kind of explaining the process. And then we'll open it up for comments, which you'll be able to either do in writing if you would like, or you may be able to raise your hand and speak your comment aloud. During that part of the evening, Mary Ann and I will both be listening very carefully to your comments, but we will not be responding or answering any questions. So I just want to be very clear about that. This is also not the only time that you will have to put your comments in on the record. And we'll talk about other ways you can do that at the end of the evening as well. I'll also go over where you can find other information about this project if you're just learning about it. We do have more days coming up. The public info or the comment period is going to be open past the end date of this hearing tonight. So you have plenty of time still to submit comments on the record. We're also going to talk about where you can go to get other questions that you might have answered after the meeting tonight. So in Zoom, if you're not familiar, we do have people that are only calling in and they may not be able to actually see the screen. So at times when I am giving information about who to contact, I will be reading phone numbers and email addresses aloud. So if you are calling in, you can, might want to grab just a pen and a piece of paper to write some of that information down in case it is important to you. So a couple of other things. We are muting all your lines during the question and, or not the question and answer, but during the informational session when Erin's going to be giving her presentation. And we are recording this meeting. A little bit about the recording, we do send these out to be transcribed so that if you know someone who reads in a different language primarily and not English, they can actually see those translated on YouTube when they're ready. So sometimes that takes a little bit longer and I just kind of want everybody to be aware of that. Okay, so how do you ask a question? So as we go through the Q and A portion of the night, if you have a question, you can go ahead and type it into your question and answer box on the bottom of the screen. If you really feel passionate about speaking your question aloud, that we will have an opportunity to do that. And you can just click the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen as well and we'll be able to see that you've done that. If, I'd appreciate if you kind of wait until the end of Erin's presentation. That just might make it easier and I'll try to get to your questions in the order that we receive them. If you are on the phone, you can also raise your hand, quote unquote, to ask a question and that's perfectly fine. If you'd like to speak out loud, you're just going to want to type star nine into your phone. So that's going to be it for me. I'm going to go ahead and pass this over to Erin. Now Erin, I'm going to stop sharing my screen so that you can go ahead and share yours.
All right. Thanks, Jen. So you're able to see my presentation here just to make sure?
Yep, we got it. That looks perfect.
All right. So good evening, everyone. My name is Erin Moran, like Jen said, and I am the Lead Enforcement Specialist for the legal settlement with Marathon. And I'm one of multiple AQD staff involved in this case. So if you were here for the past information session that we did for Marathon about a month ago, this presentation is going to be basically the same except for at the end, we have a few more details about the supplemental environmental project. But other than that, it'll be a very similar to same presentation. So we're going to start with an overview of the air quality division and enforcement process. And then after that, we'll talk about the proposed consent order. So we all know that pollution comes from many different things such as big farms, fuel burning vehicles and various industrial sources. The overall mission of the air quality division is to protect public health and the environment. And AQD has the authority to do this by regulating industrial sources. So the AQD is separated into different functions. For example, air quality staff monitor levels of air pollutants, look at different toxics to make sure public health is protected, conduct inspections of regulated facilities. And we write, or we review applications and write permits for sources of air pollutants to ensure the operations comply with our rules and regulations. Enforcement falls under the realm of checking for compliance with rules and permits. So in this slide, I'm going to give a simple overview of the steps of the enforcement process. What we call escalated enforcement is a legal process by which a company is able to resolve violations with the state of Michigan. This flow chart shows the steps of the enforcement process. So first, a district inspector selects and then visits a company to make sure the company is following state and federal rules and regulations and also the conditions of the permit. A district inspector can also request an review of company's records. The inspector then evaluates their findings during the inspection or records review. If inspector finds a violation, a violation notice is sent to the company to officially let them know that AQD has found violations and also to give the company a chance to resolve the violations. If the company is not able to resolve the violations in a timely manner, if there are multiple and or ongoing violations or if the violation is what is called a high priority violation, the district may send or escalate the violations to enforcement. Once the enforcement unit, and that is where I work, receives the escalated enforcement referral from the district office, we send an enforcement notice to the company. This enforcement notice lets the company know that the violations that the district staff cited in the violation notice will need to be resolved through the legal enforcement process. And next, the enforcement and district staff meet with the company to discuss how the violations will be resolved through the legal process. In a case such as this with Marathon, the legal settlement agreement is called a consent order. And once the AQD staff and the company agree on the terms and conditions of a consent order, the consent order is posted online for a public notice and comment period. And this is where we are now in the process. The AQD holds a public hearing if one is requested or if the case or company is high profile. For this case with Marathon, we're having a public hearing tonight after this informational session. So after the public hearing, the AQD addresses all substantive comments from the public. If there's demand from the public on an item that AQD is able to change in the consent order, AQD may go back to the company and propose changes to the consent order. If no changes will or can be made, the company and AQD sign the consent order and then the company is legally required to complete the requirements of the consent order. So next, I'd like to talk about what the goals of AQD's enforcement program are. So first, enforcement ensures that state and federal rules and regulations are meant to hold violators accountable. If a company violates the rules and regulations that Eagle and AQD are authorized to enforce, then enforcement can be used as a tool to bring the company back into compliance. Second, enforcement serves to level the playing field. This ensures that similar businesses are doing similar compliance actions at their facilities by investing in environmental compliance. A company should be allowed to gain an economic advantage by not complying with the rules which may allow them to, for example, sell their product at a better price or avoid costs of environmental compliance such as purchasing air pollution control equipment. Third, enforcement serves to create a deterrent effect to the regulated community. Any company that creates air emissions must follow the relevant rules and regulations. If these rules and regulations are broken, then Eagle's enforcement divisions can enforce legal action and fines. So the previous points that I just discussed all work together to compel compliance in the regulated community. Compliance with the rules and regulations is key in protecting public health and the environment. So when can enforcement happen? There are multiple ways that violations can end up being escalated to enforcement. Our district staff are key in monitoring compliance throughout the state. District staff travel to companies and conduct inspections. Any violation observed during an inspection is documented. District staff also respond to complaints received by members of the community and can find and cite violations as a result of a complaint. District staff also review test plans and results, monitoring record keeping and recording, reporting requirements to check for violations. So in this case with Marathon, air quality staff found violations as a result of reviewing test results by observing violations during inspections at the facility and from investigating citizen complaints. Lastly, a company can end up in enforcement by failing to meet their current requirements or by failing to meet deadlines to come into compliance. Now I will answer some more specific questions about the enforcement process. So first, what is escalated enforcement? Escalated enforcement is the legal process which we use to resolve the violations that were cited and sent to escalated enforcement. What is a consent order? A consent order is a legally binding contract between the company and the state. It contains a compliance program to resolve alleged air quality violations and prevent future violations, contains a monetary fine and contains stipulated fines for any future violations of the consent order. A consent order resolves all outstanding violations through the implementation of the compliance plan. Once a company achieves compliance with the compliance program that is written in the consent order, AQD considers the violations to have been resolved. And 90% of the violations that are escalated to enforcement are resolved through a consent order. So now I'm going to move on to a discussion of the current settlement. So this slide outlines a summary of the different parts of Marathon's consent order. So I will go into more detail about these points that I have here in this slide, in the coming slides. So this proposed consent order identifies the violations that AQD found at Marathon. The proposed consent order contains a compliance program which Marathon will be required to follow. The total settlement amount that Marathon will pay is $363,853. Marathon will be required to pay a penalty of $81,853 to the State of Michigan General Fund within 30 days of when the proposed consent order becomes effective. Marathon will be required to complete two supplemental environmental projects and spend a total of $282,000 on these projects. The consent order includes stipulated fines for any violations of this proposed consent order. So this map shows the locations of the different parts of Marathon's facility in Detroit and Mottledale. The labels show the locations of the units that are subject to this proposed consent order. Here you can see the locations of the asphalt tank farm, the coker flare, the fluid catalytic cracking unit and also the crude vacuum heater. The yellow highway that you can see running from the top right to the bottom left of the map is I-75. So next, I will talk about Marathon's violations that we will be resolving in the proposed consent order. This slide includes a summary of the violations and then I will go into more detail about each violation in the coming slides. So overall, Marathon exceeded particulate matter and hydrogen sulfide emission limits, exceeded visible emission limits and properly operated certain equipment and had three instances of odor violations which caused unreasonable interference with the comfortable enjoyment of life and property. The first violations that I'm going to talk about are the emission limit violations. So Marathon exceeded the particulate matter emission limit for two pieces of equipment, the crude vacuum heater and the coker heater. These particulate matter emission limits are measured during performance tests, which are also called stack tests. While the test result from the crude vacuum heater was a confirmed emission exceedance, the reading for the particulate matter emission exceedance from the coker heater was due to outside contamination during the sample collection. Investigations after the test determined that this test was atypical. Marathon also exceeded the permitted hydrogen sulfide emission limit from the heaters. In this equipment, hydrogen sulfide is measured by a continuous emission monitoring system. Marathon exceeded the hydrogen sulfide emission limit for three consecutive hours on October 18th of 2017. Marathon also exceeded the visible emission limit from the fluid catalytic cracking unit. And this limit was exceeded multiple times in October and November of 2018. And next, I will talk about Marathon's violations for improper, improper equipment operation. So first, continuous monitoring is required to monitor the hydrogen sulfide level in refinery gas from the flares. Marathon failed to continuously monitor two flares, the unifier flare and the coker flare, during the third quarter of 2018. Second, Marathon failed to maintain the minimum inlet velocity to the primary internal cyclones of the fluid catalytic cracking unit. Maintaining velocity in this unit is important to prevent visible emissions exceedances. Lastly, Marathon failed to properly combust gases vented to the coker flare. Gases vented to the coker flare are required to be properly combusted in order to reduce emissions of hazardous air pollutants. Now I will go into the nuisance odor violations that we will be resolving in this proposed consent order. So AQD alleges that on three occasions, Marathon caused unreasonable interference with the comfortable enjoyment of life and property. So I'm first going to talk about the odors on November 25th and December 15th of 2019. And then on the next slide, I will go into more detail about the February 2nd and 3rd, 2019 incident. So on November 25th of 2019, asphalt odors were detected beyond Marathon's property line. These nuisance odors were caused by high tank temperatures during asphalt barge loading. On December 15th of 2019, sewage sludge odors were detected beyond Marathon's property line. These nuisance odors were due to the loss of nitrication at, of the membrane bioreactor at Marathon's wastewater treatment facility. So now I'll go into more detail about the incident on February 2nd and 3rd of 2019. So on these dates, sulfur odors were detected beyond Marathon's property line. AQD initially focused on the coker flare system, but upon further investigation, a broken pipe was discovered at the gas concentration unit. During normal conditions, steam is used to heat gas lines in this system. Due to the poor vortex conditions at the time of this incident, the units providing steam were shut down due to freeze ups. The shutdown in turn called what is called a dead leg, which is a low point in a pipe to accumulate water and eventually freeze. And this is what is shown on the picture in this, on the slide. The accumulating ice eventually caused the pipe to burst and therefore allowing gas to escape. This included hydrogen sulfide which caused the odors. Additionally, when the gas recovery system was shut off to help get this issue under control, another malfunction caused additional odors. When the gas recovery system was shut off, the gas was rerouted to the coker flare to be burned. A plugged drain line in the coker flare increased the pressure of the gas routed to the flare and this resulted in the breach of a molecular seal in the equipment. This resulted in the release of hydrogen sulfide and also mercaptans which are an odorous gas. So monitoring of this incident showed that no air quality standards were exceeded, but community residents did experience significant effects from the odors. The odor threshold for hydrogen sulfide is very low, meaning that even at low concentrations, the odor from this gas can be noticeable, offensive or cause odor-related health effects such as those reported by community members. So the proposed consent order requires Marathon to follow a compliance program, which I'm going to go over in the next few slides. To address violations and prevent future violations from happening, Marathon must comply with their permit limits and relevant rules. This includes the following items. First, Marathon must comply with Rule 901, which is Michigan's nuisance odor rule that says any source of air emissions shall not cause unreasonable interference with the comfortable enjoyment of life and property. Marathon must also operate the coker flare in compliance with Rule 910, which states that an air cleaning device shall be installed, maintained and operated in a satisfactory manner and in accordance with the air pollution control rules and law. Marathon must also comply with the particulate matter, hydrogen sulfide and visible emission limits in their permit for the pieces of equipment that were at the source of the violations. Also, Marathon must comply with the specific conditions of the permit that were violated. This includes complying with the startup, shutdown and malfunction plan for the fluid catalytic cracking unit, properly operating the continuous emission monitoring system for the unifier flare and the coker flare, which monitors and records the hydrogen sulfide level in the refinery gas burned at these flares and comply with the requirements that were violated for the flare control devices in this instance for the coker flare. So continuing, two of the alleged violations were the result of failed performance tests for a particulate matter on the crude vacuum heater and the coker heater. As I addressed in the previous slide, to address these violations, Marathon must comply with the particulate matter emission limit. For all performance tests, Marathon must submit and implement a test plan that will be reviewed and approved by AQD. If any of the test plans are insufficient, AQD will request that Marathon make changes before the plan will be approved. For the crude vacuum heater, Marathon will be required to conduct two annual performance tests demonstrating compliance with the particulate matter emission limit. Once Marathon demonstrates compliance with the particulate matter emission limit in two consecutive tests, then they can return to their frequency of testing required in their permit. For the coker heater, Marathon will test for compliance with the particulate matter emission limit upon any request from AQD. So Marathon must also implement, update, implement and/or develop multiple plans or procedures. Each of these plans and procedures will be reviewed by AQD for approval. If any plan or procedure is insufficient, AQD will request that Marathon make changes before a plan will be approved. So in this slide and the next slide, I'm going to give an overview of each of the plans and procedures that are contained in the proposed consent order. First, Marathon will implement the activities involving online equipment, risk assessment checklist and approvals form. This will help Marathon better run their operations to prevent excess particulate matter emissions. Marathon will submit a preventative maintenance plan for the crude vacuum heater and coker heater. This will also help prevent excess particulate matter emissions. Marathon will also develop and implement a refining maintenance procedure for performing preventive maintenance on electrical equipment. Marathon will update and submit a startup, shutdown and malfunction plan for the fluid catalytic cracking unit. This will minimize the time in which this unit operates on internal circulation or hot standby to minimize visible emissions exceedances during startup and shutdown. So continuing, Marathon will submit a plan to minimize analyzer downtime and SO2 emissions during steam outs before the next planned maintenance period that will require steam outs. This will also minimize the time in which Marathon is not able to continuously monitor hydrogen sulfide emissions through the continuous emission monitoring system. Marathon will submit an updated operations procedure for the coker flare, including weekly verification of proper operation of the molecular seal drain, daily verification that the molecular seal drain line is operating properly during temperatures below freezing and a winterization plan. They will also develop and submit a post-incident community air monitoring and response plan, including procedures for determining when post-incident community air sampling is conducted, the radius of the monitored area, the data to be collected, parameters to be measured, when further communication or action may be necessary to respond to an incident, as well as reporting results to the AQD and communicating results and information to the public. Marathon will also develop a refinery-wide winterization plan, including procedures for mitigating the effects of a loss of refinery steam supply. Now, once the proposed consent order is effective, AQD will monitor compliance with each of these compliance items that I have covered. If AQD finds that Marathon is not following the compliance plan, Marathon will be held liable for stipulated fines. So since this case was escalated to enforcement in January of 2018, Marathon has completed items that were previously required under the proposed consent order. Because these items were properly completed and verified by AQD, they were removed from the proposed consent order. So between August of 2017 and October of 2019, Marathon conducted six separate performance tests on the crude vacuum heater. Each of these tests showed that Marathon was in compliance with the particulate matter emission limit for the crude vacuum heater. Marathon also passed a performance test on the coker heater in December of 2018. The test showed that Marathon was in compliance with the particulate matter emission limit for the coker heater. Marathon also installed a pressure transmitter in the coker flare. This pressure transmitter is capable of determining whether liquid is accumulating in the molecular seal. This will minimize the occurrence of another malfunction that could lead to an emissions or odor incident. Marathon also repaired the regulator on the natural gas feed to the auxiliary burner in the fluid catalytic cracking unit. This will keep the proper operating velocity in the fluid catalytic cracking unit and therefore help prevent visible emissions exceedances. So next, I'm going to talk about Marathon's penalty. The AQD uses EPA's penalty policy to calculate monetary penalties. Michigan's supplemental environmental project policy also plays a role in the penalty calculation. The EPA's penalty policy lays out what the fine amount should be for each violation and then those amounts are added up. The policy considers the actual or possible harm to the environment or public health and the importance to achieving the goals of the Clean Air Act and Michigan's air pollution controls. To calculate the penalty, the To calculate the penalty, the policy evaluates the amount of pollutants that are emitted over the allowed permitted levels, the sensitivity of the environment, the toxicity of the pollutants, the length of the violations, and the size of the violator. In this case, AQD also considered the quality of the supplemental environmental projects. So once the appropriate factors were determined, an initial penalty amount was calculated from the penalty policy. That initial calculated penalty was offered to Marathon, and then we came to a final settlement. Factors such as litigation risk, the company's willingness to cooperate to resolve violations, and Marathon's history of noncompliance were taken into account in determining this final settlement amount. Any company enforcement also has the right to present additional factual information about the alleged violations that AQD can take into consideration when ultimately determining the final penalty. So when completing a supplemental environmental project, the company does get a mitigation credit from their penalty, but ultimately pays more money than if they were to settle without doing an environmental project. So in this case, if Marathon were to simply settle the case without doing a supplemental environmental project, the final penalty would be two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and all of this money will go to the state of Michigan general fund. However, since Marathon chose to do two supplemental environmental projects, they will ultimately be paying three hundred and sixty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars, which is more than the final penalty. Marathon will be required under this proposed consent order to spend at least two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars for the supplemental environmental projects. Because Marathon is doing these projects, the Michigan supplemental environmental project policy allowed them to receive mitigation credit towards the initial penalty. So this is why the penalty that is going to the general fund is eighty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars. The result of the supplemental environmental projects is that more money is now going to the benefit of the community that would have otherwise gone to the general fund. So for the final topic of the night, I'm going to talk about the two supplemental environmental projects that Marathon is going to complete as part of this proposed consent order. So first, what is a supplemental environmental project? This is an environmental or a public health project that a company volunteers to do as part of a consent order. The project must go above and beyond what is required by law and provide added benefits to the community or environment that has been affected by the violations. For the first project, Marathon will spend at least two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars to retrofit an existing air handling system at the Mark Twain School for Scholars, which is located at twelve eight hundred Visser Street in Detroit. This will include air conditioning, enhanced air filtration, and air purification using photo hydroionization. Marathon will also pay for replacement filters and cells for the length of the proposed consent order, which is five years. The project will improve indoor air quality for the children and employees at the school. For the second project, Marathon will spend fifty-six thousand dollars to provide an online platform that will allow the public to see real time data of the air quality at the perimeter of Marathon's refinery. This platform will allow the public to see data for carbon monoxide, particulate matter, sulfur dioxide, total reduced sulfur, and volatile organic compounds on the Detroit Refinery Community website. So this is a map of the location of the supplemental environmental project, the Mark Twain. On the left is a zoomed out map of the area, and the small highlighted point is the location of the environmental project, which is at the school. You can see Marathon in the center of the map. And on the right is a picture of the Mark Twain School, which is located to the east of I seventy-five in Marathon. So since the last informational session, we asked Marathon to put together a simplified diagram of the HVAC system for members of the public so it's easier to visualize. That diagram is what is shown on the slide. We have also learned that as Marathon evaluated this project and conducted a feasibility study, the cost of the system going into the school has increased. It is previously estimated that the entire air filtration system project would cost two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. But by working out more details of the project and what is needed in the school, the project is actually going to cost around double of the initial cost. Currently, the school has a very simple air handling system that includes some inefficient filters, heaters, and a fan that pushes air through the building. There is also no air conditioning right now. The new system is a significant upgrade and will greatly improve the air quality in the building. The existing ductwork and fan are capable of handling the new additions to the air handling system. And these new additions are going to include air conditioning, a series of high quality efficient filters, and the photo hydroionization system. Marathon will also be cleaning out the existing ductwork to ensure greater efficiency for the system and for cleaner air. So now for when these projects will begin. As detailed out in the project proposals, there are multiple steps to be completed before the air filtration system is up and running. So first, a detailed engineering study must be completed, and this will happen on or before September thirtieth of twenty twenty. This part of the project is going to take some time to complete. The school was built mostly in the nineteen fifties, and there are no current blueprints or drawings for the existing air handling system. So for this reason, Marathon has to hire a contractor to map the existing system before they are able to determine what exact equipment they need to order and before they begin modifying the system. So after the engineering study is completed, the orders for all equipment will be placed on or before October thirty-first of twenty twenty. The wait time to receive the equipment from this order is a few months. And after this equipment is received, the construction will begin. The mechanical completion and startup will be on or before August thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. Once the air filtration system is up and running, Marathon will pay for replacement filters and photo hydroionization cells for the duration of the proposed consent order, which is five years. As for the online platform, the site will be fully operational and available to the community by December thirty-first of twenty twenty. So because there has been a lot of interest in this air filtration project, we have asked Marathon, and they have agreed to hold a community meeting to present more information about this project and also to answer questions. So right now, the meeting is currently planned for one week from today, on Wednesday, September ninth, from six to seven thirty PM. This will be a Microsoft Teams meeting, and information on how to attend the meeting will be on Marathon's website, which is detroitrefinery.com. And please note that this session will only be for questions about the air filtration project itself. So any questions or comments related to the proposed consent order or violations should be directed to myself or someone else at AQD. That is my last talking point of the evening, so now I will turn it back over to Jen for the question and answer session.
All right. Thanks a lot, Erin. I appreciate that. All right, so we're going to get into the Q and A session. Panelists, if you guys would like to turn your cameras back on, that would be wonderful. Just to go over again how to ask a question, the first thing we're going to do tonight is get to any questions that are typed into the question box. So that's just on the bottom of your screen there. If you want to speak your question out loud, or you're more than welcome to do that, we're going to get to the written questions probably first and then allow people to raise their hands. So just click on the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen. I know we do have people calling in. So if you are on the phone and you have a question, please just click star nine onto your phone, and that will actually raise your hand for us. So remember, this portion of the night is for a conversation where you can ask us questions, and our panel members will be able to respond. At seven o'clock or before, depending on if we're done with the Q and A, we will go to the public hearing part, and just as a reminder, that portion of the evening does now not allow back and forth conversation. That is purely for us to take your comments on the record, which you can either do in writing by typing them into the question box or by speaking them out loud. Again, we are going to have other opportunities for you to provide comments to us on the record. This is not your only chance to do that. I know some people, sometimes this is the first time you're hearing a lot of this information. It's a lot. Visualizing the processes that Erin was talking about can sometimes be overwhelming as well. Maybe you want to attend Marathon's meeting next week to give you a little bit more information about the supplemental environmental projects, and that will allow you to formulate your comment a little bit better. So I just want to make sure everyone knows that this is not your only opportunity to provide comments for the record. So just putting the panelist names up there again, so everyone can see. And I want to see if we've got any questions here, and sometimes my computer is a little funky when I'm trying to open stuff up. So I know we had had one question just about, you know, where is the information housed about what's going on in the proposed consent order? So I did respond back with that, just to let you know too, while you guys are formulating some of your questions, that we do do a follow-up email. So if you have provided a valid email address when you were getting into the webinar tonight, we will be sending you back a response that will include information like the slides from the conversation tonight, if you want to look at those. A recording of the meeting, some links to that information about the project. We also have a new supplemental environmental project policy, which we've kind of updated our website and included some more of that information. So if you were interested in that, that's also available for you on that website, and I'll make sure that I share that with you. I just want to make sure that everyone has all the information that they could possibly need to feel like they are able to participate in this process and make comments on the record if they would like to do that. So I don't currently have any questions. I just want to let you all know that. Don't be shy about raising your hand if you'd rather speak your question out loud. I know some people don't necessarily like to do that, but some people really do, so we're definitely open to that. Erin, I had a couple of questions for you, just as we kind of let people have a chance to type in some questions here. And the one of the things that you mentioned a lot is the mitigation of the fine. And when we use that word mitigation, I think it's kind of something that I always have to sort of think about, you know, what do you mean? So can you talk a little bit about what that actually, what that actually is? When you say mitigate, what are you, what do you mean there? Can you put in a little bit of a different English for me?
Sure. So mitigation is essentially a percent, I guess, percent off that a company gets for completing a supplemental environmental project. Now, as I kind of explained in the presentation, having a percent off of your penalty doesn't mean that you are paying less. So when a company proposes a supplemental environmental project, it's going to be a certain dollar amount. So we take that dollar amount and we put it through a model that EPA has provided that we use called the EPA project model. And this takes into account a few different factors, such as when the money is going to be spent and how much money is going to be spent, and when the different penalty portions are going to be paid. So it has a lot, a lot to do with inflation and economic factors. So, you know, for example, for inflation, you have a dollar right now, but in three years, it's not going to have the same value because of inflation. So we put the, the cost right now of the project into this model, and it spits out another number that is essentially the future cost of the project of when the expenses are actually going to be made. So that's the cost. And based on this cost, and then how we rate the project, the company gets a certain percent off. So in a project such as Marathon's, where we rated it as high quality, you get seventy-five percent off of your penalty. So that's where the eighty-one thousand dollars came from. But generally, the supplemental environmental projects are costing as much as the penalty amount. So you have to pay as much as that penalty amount, and then you also going to have to pay the fine, like, for if it's seventy-five percent off, you still have to pay that leftover twenty-five percent to the general fund. So essentially, if you do a project, you know, it's good for the community, but you're also going to end up paying more. But also, it's important that we have some sort of fine system to go into the general fund as well.
So you had also talked a little bit about, and this is something that came up since our last meeting, that we had found out some information, or Marathon, as they started doing their engineering project, had discovered that it was going to be more than the two hundred and eighty-two thousand. I'm paraphrasing the number there. And so is there going to be a time where the community would be privy to that final number? You know, whatever that ends up being, or is there going to be sort of like an amendment to the proposal where that becomes more public, that kind of final number? Because I know it's not quite final yet.
So we have asked Marathon for an updated project proposal since, you know, as they have gone through and investigated this project more, they're finding that, I guess, before, you know, they kind of estimated what equipment they would need, but going into it, they're needing different sizes and some more equipment. So that's why the, the price has gone up. So I'm blanking out.
No, you're fine. No, that makes total sense. And I, I, my, the end of my question was, you know, will the community be able to see that number at some point, whatever?
So we, you know, just received information about the project, and that's something that we need to review internally and with Marathon. But, you know, after we review it and accept this new proposal, then that's definitely something that we are going to provide to the public and probably put on the website with the other enforcement documents.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's awesome, and we can definitely send a update note out to folks who participated either in this meeting or the last meeting. So we do have a couple of questions coming in. This is one of the things that, we talked about this a little bit last time. So Erin, I'm going to shoot this over to you first, and then Susan, if you can be on standby to help answer this. And the question is about the air quality monitors, and these would be the ones that are at the perimeter of Marathon and that are already existing. And the question is, is the equipment controlled by Marathon? And should it be somebody else, or an environmental group, or AQD, or something like that? So Erin, if you can talk about that a little bit, and then if you can pass it over to Susan, that'd be great.
Sure. So the monitors that are currently at the perimeter of, you know, Marathon's fence line were requirement of a permit that they have. And so from my understanding, Marathon is, you know, operating those monitors and getting the information from them. But I believe they're also sharing that with us. So Susan, if you want to add anything, I think you know a little more about it.
Sure. So those air monitors were part of an air permit requirement, and there are four air monitoring stations. Three are within the fence line of Marathon, and one is actually at the Mark Twain School. Marathon hired an environmental consultant, environmental professional, to actually run and operate those monitors and to do the sampling for the volatile organic compounds that's done once every six days. The other parameters are done continuously, but they do use an environmental consultant to do that work. Oh, and the other little part, they do submit the data to us monthly. And so our staff in the AQD, we review that data from the consultant.
Okay, yeah, that's what I wanted to make sure that you definitely clarified that. So hopefully that helped answer the question. And, but if it didn't, then definitely type in, you know, a little bit more for us, a little bit of clarification. So we've got another question here. So this is going to be for you, Erin, and I know you've done a lot of work sort of researching the HVAC portion of this, and it's been an education, I feel like, for all of us, maybe more than we thought we would ever have. So the question is, you mentioned that the SEP would retrofit the existing unit on the Mark Twain School. So does that mean the air conditioning unit will utilize part of the forced air unit that is currently in the school? Would it be a complete replacement of that portion? Was there any consideration given to installing a new unit completely separate from the parts of the old system? And just as a caveat before you get started, I think this would be a great question to ask Marathon at their meeting next week too. But if you want to, you know, try to talk about what you know about that, that would be really appreciated.
Sure, I'll take a stab at it. So the system that is in the school now, as we know, is old, but parts of it are still able to be used within the equipment. They're sufficient enough, and they're going to be able to handle all of this new equipment. So you mentioned, I think, the forced air units, I believe part of that is still going to be in there. There's also a fan that they're still going to use. This fan, you know, isn't from nineteen fifty like the rest, I guess, of the school. But this fan, from what I understand, was replaced somewhat recently. Don't know the exact year, but I know it is a new art piece of equipment. As for installing the entire new unit, I think, you know, that's something that Marathon looked into in their feasibility study and something that they're looking into in their engineering study. The details of, you know, why or why not they decided to use? The details of, you know, why or why not they decided to use existing equipment versus completely, you know, putting new equipment in there? I don't know. But, I mean, we can definitely take a note of this question and get back to you. And also, like Jen said, Marathon's holding this community meeting. So I think that'd be a great question to ask them. And, you know, we can get an answer from them, or if you can, then we'll, we'll ask again and.
Great.
Great for that.
Yep. No, I think that's, it's a really good question. And it's kind of one of those things that I know you've been sort of digging deeper into the HVAC portion of this. And I know we had asked for a sort of simplified version of the system. And when I looked at it, I was like, that is simplified, yes, but it's still obviously very complicated, which in a way I think is, you know, a good thing, you know? That means they're putting more levels of filtration and, and things like that. So, uh, yes. So the question was, can we repeat the amount that the, of the online piece that residents will be able to access? So I think that you're talking about the monitoring data platform. And so if you guys could talk, just kind of repeat, what kind of information will actually be available on there, on that website, when it is ready to go? The monitoring information?
Sure. So the website's supposed to be ready to go in December of this year. So let me just look through my notes and find out the exact pollutants that are going to be monitored. And if someone else wants to jump in and say.
I can answer that, Erin. Yeah, this is Susan, I can answer that. So the continuous monitors would be carbon monoxide or CO, sulfur dioxide or SO2, total reduced sulfur, which is TRS, and particulate matter, that's the 10 micron particles and smaller. All of those are analyzed and reported continuously, 24/7. Those monitors are always measuring and reporting data. And then the volatile organic compounds, they do sampling for those where they collect a whole air sample. And then that sample goes to a laboratory and that's done every six days. So my understanding, Erin, is that the, the continuous data will be posted on their website in near real time. But I imagine there will be a little bit of a lag time for that VOC data, just because it's not collected in real time. So it would have to go to a laboratory, be analyzed. And then I guess I'm envisioning they're going to somehow post the laboratory reports or results somehow on the website.
Yep. That VOC is, like you said, not real time. We thought that was still valuable information to the public. And so I think, you know, this supplemental environmental project is kind of a response, hopefully to fill the gap between, you know, what Marathon's emissions are and what the community wants to know, like real time, like how are emissions affecting them? So, you know, hopefully this is a way to close that gap a bit, to provide community members with more, I guess, timely data that they can see.
So, and just so that you know, I misinterpreted that question. Surprise. So thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that. And I'm, I'll tell you what, what it, what they were asking, actually asking. And that was the, the amount of money that Marathon's going to pay to implement that system. So, but before that, I just wanted to add that, you know, the way Marathon is going to be posting their near real time data is the same way that we post our near real time data, correct, Susan? I mean, we have certain pollutants in our air monitors in the area that we do post near real time information. And if you're interested in that, I'm happy to either hook you up with Susan and she can walk you through it, or I can walk you through it. And then we also have specific pollutants that we measure for in some of our monitoring stations that we do have to send to a lab to do certain things. And they are QA QC'd. And, and that's something that we do look at this data. Marathon does share this data with us. So it's not, we don't, we don't QA QC it in near real time, but we don't do that for our own stuff either. That's almost impossible to do, but there is a check and balance that takes place there. It's not something that's just happening in a void. So with that being said, Erin, did you, were you able to pull up that exact amount of that platform for me?
Yep, it's going to be $56,000.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize for misinterpreting that question. I'm just checking to see if we had any more questions coming in or anyone raising their hand to chat. I think we're going to be getting close here to doing that, switching over to our public hearing session of the night. So if folks are interested in making, oh, sorry, go ahead, Les, what's up?
I'm sorry, Jen.
No, you're fine.
There's a question about an online platform.
Yep, we just answered that one. You weren't listening. That was a question I misinterpreted, so.
Okay, no worries.
No, I apologize for that. Les is my right-hand man tonight. I do appreciate him helping me out. And since we've gone to Zoom, it's been a little bit more challenging sometimes to get this done. Okay, so as we get ready to go over to our public hearing session of the night, portion of the night, we did have one other question come in here. And I think this is a great question, actually. So I want to make sure we answer this before we move on to the hearing part. But if you are thinking of making a comment on the record, just, you know, kind of be thinking about that, because we're going to go into that pretty quickly. Okay, so this question is, a lot of the residents in this community may not be computer literate, or maybe they don't have access to the internet or computers. So it definitely limits the amount of residents that may be able to access Marathon's information when they put that data online. That's something that I know we struggle with a lot with our data. You know, like we were talking about earlier, we definitely post a lot of this information online, that near real time stuff is automatically sort of uploaded. The comment is that money could maybe have been put to better use. So I don't know, we probably can't comment on that right now, but I didn't know. And Susan, I'm going to kind of pick your brain and put you on the spot on this one. But have we had any sort of instances or circumstances where we figured out other ways to kind of share this data? Obviously not near real time, but in, with residents that maybe have limited access to the internet and things like that?
So, I mean, even though the data will be posted by Marathon in near real time, they'll still be reporting to us the monthly data and we'll still be reviewing it and we'll still be uploading that data to EPA's air, air database. We do have the ability to go into that database and pull summary reports. So if the community has questions about data, they can always contact us. We can go into that database, we can pull summary reports and we can, we can provide that information. Or we can, we can look at it and answer questions on the phone or in another way. We do issue or publish an annual air quality report every year of our Eagle Air Quality Division air monitoring data. And that report gives a really nice summary of all the monitoring that we've done around the state. It gives kind of some yearly averages, just all kinds of nice data in the back of that report. That report does not include industrial monitoring data. So I do want to say that it's really only for our data.
So it wouldn't include Marathon's monitors necessarily?
Yeah, no, it doesn't include any industrial data that's, that's being collected around the state. But we certainly can obtain that data and provide it, you know, either talking to folks on the, on the phone or maybe emailing if, if that's better. So we're, we're open to trying to be helpful and provide data and information however we can. So.
Yeah, this is definitely, well, it's one of the challenges that we're facing, I think, not only with something like that, but even the meetings that we're having tonight. I mean, we are able to have people call in, but obviously they can't see the slides necessarily. And, and the interaction is different and it's certainly not perfect. I think staff are definitely more than willing to talk through things, answer questions on the phone. You know, there may be opportunities in the future as we kind of figure out how we're going to handle, not necessarily being able to meet in person, other ways that we could get that information to folks if they're really interested. I mean, George Acevedo is the inspector for the facility and he's very integrated into what's going on in the community and, and talking to folks. And he's a great to ask questions of. And I'm sure he would also be willing to walk folks through stuff. We did have a few more questions, but it is seven o'clock, so we do need to get over to the hearing portion. What I'm going to say is, the questions that we have coming in now, if we can hold them, we'll either respond back to you if you have, you know, asked with your name. Otherwise, we might have a few minutes after the hearing portion to get back to some of these just questions where we can have a little bit more of a conversation. So I want to just kind of put those aside for now and I want to move towards the hearing portion of the night. So what I want to do is just kind of go over a couple, a couple more things. If you want to make a comment on the record, what I would ask you to do is either type your comment into the question and answer box. And if you can write the word comment, that would be really helpful for us. So as we go through things at the end, I'll read your comment out loud unless you tell me, you know, unless you write, do not read. Most people would like it to be read out loud. If you would like to ask, if you would like to make a comment verbally, if you could raise your hand, we will get to you. Or if you feel more comfortable typing in the question box, I'd like to, you know, comment verbally. That would be great. So what I'm going to do now is in order to officially open the hearing, I do have to read that sort of dry statement to you. Mary Ann, if you want to turn your camera on, because, and panelists, if you'd like to turn yours off now, that would be great. So Mary Ann and I are going to be listening in during the official comment period tonight. But as I said, I do need to read this opening statement for you. As a reminder, the hearing portion is the part of the night where we won't be able to respond to questions. A couple other things, if you're calling in and you want to make a comment, I will read the last three digits of your phone number to identify you. So make sure you know those. We've had times, I sometimes forget my own phone number or I give my husband's number to people on accident. And then I was going to say one other thing on that. I don't remember. If I remember later, I'll, I'll let you guys know. But, okay, so here we go. This is going to be the start of the public hearing portion of the night. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jennifer Dixon and I am with the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, or Eagle. I will be serving as the hearings officer for this public hearing on the draft administrative consent order for Marathon Petroleum Company LP, hereafter referred to as Marathon, located in Detroit, Michigan. Mary Ann Dolehanti, Division Director of Eagle's Air Quality Division, is the decision maker for this administrative consent order. The Air Quality Division is responsible for regulating sources of air pollutants to minimize adverse impact on human health and the environment. The law governing these responsibilities is Part 55 of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. We are here tonight to receive your comments on the draft consent order. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the draft consent order for Marathon an opportunity to provide information the Air Quality Division can use in deciding whether to approve the consent order as written or if there are additional issues to be considered. Please recognize that Eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria Eagle must use in making a decision. For example, concerns related to local zoning, truck traffic and noise are not within Eagle's authority. In addition, some of you may want to express your support or opposition to the draft consent order. We'll be happy to make note of your position, but please understand that Eagle is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether there is widespread support or opposition to the enforcement action. Please note the proposed terms of the draft consent order are brought to you tonight in the form of a draft agreement. This does not mean that the decision has been made. Instead, it reflects an initial agreement in which Marathon must pay a monetary penalty, complete two supplemental projects, which include the retrofitting of an existing air handling system at the Mark Twain School for Scholars and the creation of a public-facing online platform to share real-time air quality data at the perimeter of the refinery. Marathon would also agree to pay additional penalties if compliance is not maintained. Everything in the draft consent order remains open for comment and further consideration by the division. We look forward to your comments on those issues. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be part of the information Eagle will consider in making its decision on the draft consent order. The public comment period for the proposed consent order will end at midnight on September 28, 2020. Additional information can be submitted until then and it will be considered when Eagle makes a decision. After the close of the public comment period, the decision maker will review all written and verbal comments received. All significant air quality-related comments will be considered, at which point a final decision on the consent order will be made by the decision maker. The decision maker may reject the consent order, approve as drafted, or approve with amendments. If approved, the decision must specify which provisions of the draft consent order, if any, have been changed in the final consent order and the reasons for these changes. In all three scenarios, all interested parties, including everyone who was on their original mailing list, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period, and anyone who attended either the informational session or the meeting tonight, will be directly notified of the decision. As stated previously, you might, you may submit a comment at any time to the email address or phone number provided. You may also type the word comment into the question box and submit your comment in writing. If you do not want me to read your comment, please state, do not read. If you would like to make a verbal comment, you may raise your hand and I'll unmute your line so you can speak. We'll limit your comment time to three minutes and I will do my best to address commenters in the order your hands were raised, but please bear with us as technology has challenges to doing that. Please recognize department staff are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your views on the proposed draft consent order and listen to those comments. Thank you so much for your attention. I will now begin calling the names of those who have indicated they would like to make a statement. So I believe that we're going to be starting tonight with Mike Simmons. I think he was on earlier and he had noted that he wanted to make a comment, but I do not see him on now. So remember, if you are calling in and you would like to raise your hand, you're just going to click star nine on your phone and that will raise your hand for us. Mike Simmons is here, but I do not see him on the list. Am I missing him? Les, if you see him, if you can help me out with that.
I'm looking, I didn't see his name or something.
Okay, hold on one second.
Oh, we have a hand.
Yep, there we go. So I have unmuted your line, if you just raised your hand. Maybe potentially.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Sorry about that. I don't know if that was technical difficulties or not, but if you'd like to make a comment, if you could please state your name for the record and then go ahead and make your comment.
My name is Mike Simmons. I'm the Executive Director of Facilities at the Detroit Public School Community District. And my comment is basically, again, at the district, we did recognize that there is a need to improve the air quality at the classrooms at the Mark Twain School for Scholars. And the project that was provided or recommended by Marathon does accomplish those tasks, even though it was as complicated as you had commented. But for us in the facilities world, it really, it was a very creative of plan. The initial proposal that was offered by Marathon, when they did bring it to us, they, it was recommended that standalone purifiers be utilized in each of the classroom. But given the age of the school's infrastructure, we did not have AC and we advised against that approach. And based upon further discussion and reviewing the existing air handlers, both parties, us and Marathon, did agree. So the district did meet with Marathon and the HVAC industry experts to discuss solutions. And the project that was proposed was to utilize two variations of MIR filters, the MIR 14 to MIR 8, then the MIR 13, and also installing air conditioning and air purification utilizing the photo hydroionization process. And utilizing that system, it does provide us a better atmosphere and environment for our students. And the district supports this project, including the PHI system.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Simmons. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't want to cut you off. Were you done with your comment?
Just that the district believes that this benefits the students at the Mark Twain School for Scholars.
Okay, thank you so much for your comment. I appreciate it. Justin Anwenu, I have. Justin Anwenu, I have unmuted you if you'd like to make your comment.
Great. Can you hear me? Hi, this is Justin Anwenu with the Sierra Club based in Detroit. We've been working with community residents and, sorry, in the area. And we do want to, to voice our support for the effort to make sure that students are protected in the classroom with air purification and air filtration. And we also want to urge Eagle to make sure that this is done, you know, correctly and that, you know, there aren't any corners cut. And so based on expert recommendations, we're urging Eagle and Marathon to make sure that the very best filters are installed. So making sure that these are MIR 13, MIR 14 or higher and making sure that this is captured in writing. We're urging, you know, Eagle and Marathon to ensure that the maintenance of replacing the air filters is done frequently so that the quality of the filters does not deteriorate just because they're not being replaced adequately and given the pollution in the area. We're also urging Eagle and Marathon to ensure that the maintenance cost of the replacement filters is captured so that after this five-year period, there is firm commitment that the filtration system will still be used and that students will still be protected. And then we're also urging Eagle and Marathon to move with urgency, given what we know about air pollution, impact on school performance, the relationship with COVID and particulate matter as well. And we're hoping that the winter break, school cancellation and, and other windows where, where individuals aren't in the school is used as a window to make sure that students and workers are protected. And then lastly, we just want to urge for the air monitoring online application system. We do share concerns about internet access in the area and we do want to make sure that, that all of the, whether it be reports of odor in the area or poor air quality in the area, we just want to make sure that Eagle is actually receiving these complaints that are happening through the app just so that the app doesn't become a stopgap between people reporting things to Eagle and people reporting things to this app. So just making sure that, you know, if it's an odor that's being reported, that it's still getting to Eagle so that the company can be held responsible. So thank you for, for taking the time for explaining things. And we again are, are, are happy that students and teachers are going to be protected and just want to make sure that this is done the best way possible. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Anwenu. All right, Ms. Teresa Landrum, if you would like to voice your comment, you can unmute your mic and go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Eagle, for this opportunity to speak on, but Mr. Anwenu covered most of what I was going to expound on. However, I would like to go back to the two-part system, filtration system that was mentioned. Mr. Anwenu did mention that we would like the best available technology as far as filters, 13 or 14 and higher. I understand that the first part of the filtration system, which will be the air coming from in, from outside, it would be probably an eight or nine filter. We would urge Eagle to have Marathon reconsider and put in a MIR 13 or 14 or higher that would give double protection. And also, we wanted to make sure to get clear understanding that the person that would be maintaining the unit is trained properly. And we would like, as Mr. Wen, Anwenu mentioned, we would like the maintenance to extend further than five years to assure that the unit is maintained better and that the improvement of the air quality lasts. I will submit further comments at a later date and I just thank you for allowing us this time to speak. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't have any more hands currently and I don't have any comments in the comment box. So I just wanted to give you guys a little bit more time to raise your hand if you'd like to and make a comment if you'd like to. Okay, Ms. Landrum, it looks like you have one more. So let me, oh, you put your hand down. I'm sorry. Ms. Landrum, did you have another comment that you'd like to make?
Yes, if I'm still, the mic is still open. I wanted to ask, was there any consideration about the inclusion of other emissions than the ones that were mentioned? We know there are far more chemicals that need to be monitored in the area and knowing that the area that the school is located in has a, is heavily inundated with PM 10 and 2.5 matter. And in those, that matter are other chemicals. So is there any consideration on expanding the list of chemicals or emissions that could be possibly monitored, monitored at that site from that online platform?
Okay, thank you for your comment. We'll take note of that and at least respond in the response to comments document. Anyone else would like to make a comment? You definitely have time for anybody else to do that if you would like to. Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. So since we do have some time tonight, I'm going to go ahead and close the actual hearing portion. We did have a few other questions, so we'll go ahead and, and get to that. But let me officially close the hearing for you guys. All right. So thank you for your comments and cooperation tonight. We appreciate your interest in the draft consent order for Marathon as well as the time you took to be here. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, the public comment period ends on September 28, 2020. All interested parties, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period and anyone who attended this public hearing will be directly notified of the final decision of this proposed permit. The hearing is now closed. All right, so we have a few other things to do here and then we will have some time to get to a couple more questions. Let me just, I want to go over how you can submit a comment if you didn't get a chance to tonight, but you still want to. There's plenty of time to still do that. So because we do have folks on the phone, I'm going to be reading some of this out loud. So if you're on the phone and you would like to write down either this email address or phone number or address to send in a comment in, please feel free to do that. So what, the first way that you can submit a comment is to mail us a comment. We do still get snail mail. And you can send that directly to Erin Moran and her first name is E R I N. Her last name is Moran, M O R A N. And she's in our enforcement section at Eagle, A Q D. And it's P O Box 30260 and that's in Lansing, Michigan. And the zip code for that is 48909. You can also email Erin and if you would just not, if you would mind putting comment for Marathon in the subject line, that would be great. That would really help her kind of differentiate whether you are just kind of asking a question or if you are submitting an official comment. So if you could do that comment on Marathon in the subject line, that would be great. Her email address is moran@michigan.gov and that's M as in Mary, O as in octopus, R as in red, A as in apple, N as in Nancy, E as in elephant, and it's at Michigan, all spelled out, .gov as in government. For those of you calling in on the phone, if you have limited internet access, we also take comments via voicemail. So if you'd like to call and leave a comment on our voicemail, you can call area code 517-284-0900 and leave us a message. We have, I actually should have asked if we had anybody do that yet, but we're kind of looking forward to people utilizing that. And I apologize, I have an airplane flying over my house right now, so if it's loud. I'm going to send everyone a link on where you can find more information. But if you are listening in on the phone and you do have internet access, you can go to our air quality webpage and that's michigan.gov/air. And then what you're going to do is just on the right-hand side of the page, there's a link in a kind of a gray box that says enforcement program. And once you click on that, you'll open up information about enforcement public notice, which will include the proposed enforcement summary, which is just a really shortened version of the project. You'll, you can look at the enforcement summary report, which is a little bit more of detail. The consent order, the draft consent order, that's again, a little bit more detail. We're also linking recordings of this meeting and will link to this, the past meeting and this meeting is what I wanted to say about that. So on the screen right now, and I know for those of you, I'm not good, that are on the phone, I'm not going to read out all of this information because I'm sure you've already penned down Erin's information. And if you get ahold of Erin and you really need to talk to one of the other panelists, she'll, she's more than happy to forage you on. But this page just goes over contact information for all the rest of the panelists in case that is helpful for you. Again, I will be sending you the slide, so you'll have this at your fingertips momentarily. So I will leave that up there. I think my last slide is just the exit slide and we're not going to quite be ready to exit yet. So there was a couple other questions that I wanted to get to here before we sign off. And one of them, and this again, might be better for next week at Marathon's meeting. But Erin, I just wanted to ask you, do you know if the filters that they're, that they're planning to use, at least as of right now, are reusable or are they disposable? I don't know if you know the answer to that and if you don't, that's okay, but I thought it was worth kind of exploring a minute.
That's a question that we have asked Marathon. So right now, in the project proposal, the filters are disposable. The disposable filters are, you know, the MIR 8 and 13 filters and the, especially the 13 filter is, you know, very efficient. So I think there are a few reasons why Marathon is looking for disposable filters versus the reusable filters. So the first issue is that reusable filters typically have a lower MIR rating than the disposable filters. So when we want that higher efficiency, that is where the disposable filters come in. Also, when you use a reusable filter, how effective and efficient the filter is depends on how often you clean it and how well you clean this filter. So in the project, you know, we've talked to Marathon and it seems like there are about 40 different filters that are going to need to be replaced every time there is a filter replacement event. So by using the disposable filters, it kind of cuts down on any work that whoever at DPS is, you know, replacing these filters, it cuts down on the work they have to do. And also by using the disposable filter, you know, it's clean every time and efficient every time versus if you use a reusable filter, you know, if someone isn't taking the time to really clean these filters well, it's going to be less efficient. So I think those are the main reasons that, you know, we're using disposable versus reusable. But I, that's also something we're continuing to look into with Marathon.
Sure. So this question is one that I'm not sure if we have an answer to this. So, but maybe you do and I just don't, I'm not aware of it. But the question was, so one of the features that Marathon will have on their online system is odor reporting. Do you know if their odor, like if someone lodges an odor complaint through Marathon's system, would it automatically be linked to something that we have? Or would someone that had an odor complaint need to call our complaint or use our complaint system in order to have that complaint be logged by Eagle?
I think that's probably a good question for George.
So as far as, I think it's, it's a question whether the software that's part of the SEP, does that have an odor reporting component to it?
That was, I think, a statement made that it does. And I don't know that that was made by us, but that was made by the question, the person asking the question. So maybe we don't know if it does for sure or not. I wasn't, I didn't hear, I haven't heard you guys talking about that. But if it, if it does or if it doesn't, I mean, I guess it depends on if you know or not. But typically for us, we don't necessarily have a lot of situations where we have facilities that's, that automatically forward us complaints that they would get through their own online system. It'd be something that they would either need to call you and lodge a complaint or use our online complaint form or something like that. So if, if you, if we're not aware of that, George, then it's definitely something that we can look into.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're definitely free to give us a call during, you know, for the Detroit office during normal business hours. They can call us at 313-456-4700. For after hours and weekend hours, they can call the state's P's line at 1-800-292-4706.
And I can share that, that number as well in the follow-up email, just so folks have it.
Okay.
Perfect. Okay. Well, thank you so much. So I think we're going to go ahead and close out the meeting. So I really appreciate everyone taking the time tonight. I know Mary Ann said that and staff really appreciate people taking the time out of their night. We know you have a lot better things to do typically than to do this. So we appreciate it. Again, the Marathon's meeting will be next week on the ninth. They will be posting information on how to attend that meeting and the detroitrefinery.com page. So if you and I, we heard that they should be posting that later on tonight or maybe tomorrow. So if you want to check that out, if you're interested in, in participating in that, our comment period will stay open until the 28th, just as a reminder. So again, we really appreciate your time tonight and we hope you have a great rest of your evening.